Be sure you don't sell those.
Being 7:30.
I'm a lender.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order.
And we have no audience now. So we just, did, did Stanic call and say they wanted to postpone?
Yeah, there's an email there.
Okay, I saw the letter that they sent back. And I read that through pretty good, pretty well, a couple of times. So they just must not have been available.
This is the...
I think it said that they were waiting for something from the board to help. They didn't receive it yet.
This is a nursing home?
Yes.
Yeah, this has been a problem, I think.
They have, they have a lot of stuff to talk about.
Motion to continue, Brian?
Second down.
All in favor?
Hi. Can you say the date, please?
Is it March 12th? Is that the right date? March 12th.
Did you, was the letter distributed, distributed to you folks?
Just this one.
No, the letter from, from down. It was a clear write letter.
Oh, no. I did not see it.
If, um, I'll see if I can scan it tomorrow and send it to you. Because she answered, or they answered, just about everything that Nick Laney was concerned with. She's pretty nice.
They, they did a lot.
Yeah.
They did a lot. One was, there was one comment where they...
Did you, so you got it?
I saw one. I got, yeah, I got a copy. It was sent, I believe it was sent to you.
Yeah.
And I saw a copy of it.
Okay, was it sent to you too?
No, the copies, it was just a copy. I saw a copy.
Oh, okay.
Did they, did you know if the road was addressed? I'm just so curious about that piece.
They said this wasn't the time to address it yet. And I, I believe it is, the time to address it.
I didn't, I think the parking will be kicked back too. Because I, actually, I read in the zoning bylaw, you're supposed to have two parking spaces for every dwelling. And they don't. And then, they, they're not handicap van accessible.
They are.
They are?
Yes, they have two vans in the, in the...
That's not, that doesn't meet the town standard or, you have to have like 10% or...
They have one in each building, which I think meets the quota. Because what they did was they modified what was Nick Laney's comments, they modified them on their new plan. And that's how they did it.
Okay, I, I'm not sure that there isn't still a...
I thought there was a deficiency of handicap spaces.
They're not together yet on it. But they're close. I believe they're close to the number, but I'm not sure if they're together.
I guess we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. Because it sounds to me like they are.
Okay. Okay, very good.
And...
It wasn't before us officially, if I didn't really memorize it.
No, 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 no. I just read it this afternoon again. But, um, there are rules and there are laws that state that they may not have to relocate that driveway to be within the easement. Did you know that?
No.
Absolutely. It's a real estate law, so if anyone knows anything about real estate, if you travel over a property, if you travel away every day for 20 years, that...
It's a by right access.
By right access belongs to you.
And now the building's been demoed, and now they're going to build up a new structure. I would, that's contestable.
It is, but...
I think it's a developer's problem. In a lot of ways, it's the developer issue. You know what I mean?
Right, but see, there was, there was a woman in Boston that walked across...
Oh, yeah.
The plaza...
It is for sure.
That is now the Prudential Center. And they had to provide her with a way to get through the Prudential Center.
Because she did it every day for 20 years.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah. Now, this isn't, the, 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 the one that I was, that I was going to bring up wasn't, wasn't anything wrong with the way they do go in right now. Even though some truck just wiped out one of the piers.
Yeah.
We don't want to get too far into this.
That's fine.
Because we're not having a hearing right now, right?
Right. But the, uh, what we want to do is keep them off of some of the very narrow, have to keep the people off of the dikes that are only eight feet wide.
I think there's going to have to be railings.
Yeah.
God railings.
Yes, and you'd just have to draw them, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's all it would take.
Right, and we can ask for that.
And, yeah, so it'll, it'll just be a, you know, pro forma thing, but he has to put it on the draw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, number two on the agenda is, um, an AR plan for Hickory Lane, which was continued. And that's, is that coming up tonight, Mark?
Uh, there is also a request to continue.
But that is a request? Oh, all right, okay.
A motion to continue to March 12th.
Did the developer specify a meeting or...
He didn't. He said soon. I think.
It just says, yes, I want to continue.
Well, make a motion to continue it to March 12th.
Okay, there's two motions to continue.
Oh, then I'll send it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, third is to meet with you, Mark.
So I was gonna let Jamie or Xena go first, but seeing as they're not here, they're probably driving around looking for us. I will go.
Oh, jeez.
Just, I wanted to use my hearing, so I'm going to recuse myself.
You said Jamie?
Well, Xena has the next hearing.
Yeah.
And...
Oh, okay.
Again, I only wanted to flip-flop because I wanted to use my presentation to segue into the tenant space bylaw changes that we talked about at our last meeting.
Yep.
So I thought mine would be beneficial to, if you want to run into Jamie's or sit back down and get backups. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Knox. I live at 87 Pierce Ave, but I'm representing myself for a property I have at 26 Crooked Lane. I'm currently doing some renovations to the property to make a new tenant space. This is an existing site plan of the property with existing parking and the buildings shown with a dumpster pad. The proposed exterior changes, which I think you have a small set of plans as well in your packet, shows no major change to the building except a small new entryway on the northeast side of the building. On this back entrance, I'm adding a number of parking spaces with a van-accessible parking area, handicap ramp to this entrance. None of the other parking changes, dumpster pad, nothing else. Currently, this was a single lane with parking along one side. This will become two-way traffic. Currently, there's an existing sign from my original site plan here that just says left turn only, just in case big trucks didn't turn down Crooked Lane that way. That's still in place, going to stay. One of the other, or two of the other changes that I wanted to do on the entire building, my current outside lighting is, I don't think it's really dark sky compliant, so we're going to change all that lighting and encompass within this new parking area, one light pole to light this area. And on this side of the building, next to this entrance, there's a current wall pack light. We're going to move that over so that it lines up on the edge of the parking to light this area as well.
Mm-hmm.
I also include, I should have tilted the plan of the tenant outfit space. It shows face like offices. And here's one elevation of the building. This door has been added, and actually, this window was removed. So this is the added door, no window. Everything else is pre-existing. So this is the existing today. This is the new entryway with a little copper roof on it, and there'll be walkway that I'm proposing out to this parking area. The light pole that I talked about would be right about here. And I also would like to put a small, maybe two granite post sign somewhere over here that would meet the sign regulations that the town has in their zoning bylaw. This is the wall pack that I had mentioned. There will be a dark sky compliant light in the ceiling of this entryway, so I'm going to move this one over to about here, again, to light the parking area. So those are the changes that I'm making. Didn't want to keep them from the board. I think it's, they're all pretty good with what goes, goes on in the town. And again, I also wanted to use this for, we're reviewing that tenant bylaw for the disturbance of, or change of 1,500 square feet of aggregate. It's sort of unclear if it's inside or outside the building. And I think what I'm doing here with, oh, and that's something else. On one of the previous pages, it shows the lot coverage percentage, and I'm, I think, at 43% with, with these changes. So I don't even hit the 50% criteria to have to ask for a density bonus. I think the building is nice enough, I probably would at least get one density bonus. But again, I'm not looking to cover any more land than the 50%. I'm well under that. But, so, two things. Wanted to talk to you guys about my project to make sure that everybody's good with it, and if I need to do anything else, or if you want anything changed. And then if not, I also wanted to use this as one of the things we may review or not review in the future. We talked about three triggers. The impervious coverage, if there's maybe a square footage of additional paving or parking, matting a sign, outside lighting, uh, and I'm not sure if there's anything else that... I guess the other thing, the two would be, and it's really not here, but if you had an existing space, you may actually physically made an addition to the building.
Right.
But you didn't. You're just using the space you already have.
I did.
I don't think that qualifies under the 1,500.
No, but he's just saying that one of the things that we might be aware of further down the road, if you, like, you put a mezzanine in, you know? And you put space for use up in the mezzanine, that, like...
That would trigger it?
Yeah, because if...
But do we want it to?
Trigger what?
That's what we were talking about that last week.
Do we want to trigger a site plan review by somebody making more floor space inside their building?
Personally, not in this building. Using, you know what I mean? If it's under a different use.
But if you look at Thompson Box, you know, when you get a big, high cube building, now, now another level inside.
You cut that in half, you put twice as many people in there.
Right. This, this is, no, this wouldn't be...
This isn't, this isn't a problem as far as your plan and you coming to us and getting approval goes.
Right.
But I don't want, what I, the, the main thing is, if you have a change in use, you should really have a site plan review. If you have a subdivision of a, of a building, inside of a building, you should have a site plan review, I believe. Okay?
Yeah.
My, what my fear is, is sending this or, or just letting this go so, um, somebody goes with a building plan to the billing department and says, I just want to make these modifications inside this building. And they turn around, and they get their permit, turn around and walk out, and then there's an awful lot more people doing things, or they're doing something that, that really shouldn't be allowed in that area. And I think the planning board has, is more sensitive to that than someone giving it a, you know, just a, a building, you know, once-over look, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I am adding offices and stuff in that space.
Mm-hmm.
But your question is generic for, for other, other people.
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to show you what I'm doing. If you guys have comment, I would make any changes.
No, no, sorry.
Outside of that, I'm kind of done with my presentation.
Yeah, looks all right.
I want to talk to the, there was an email circulated that I think Kathy had on our agenda at the last meeting with a specific section of the bylaw highlighted. And do we want to change that? Just change the wording?
Could it, could the wording be changed to something along the lines of, any two, any two of these things should trigger a site plan review? Because I, I actually think it's a good tool that adds a layer of protection for the town.
That's my point, is do we have...
Keeping it in place, you know?
Four things, and, or three things that might trigger, that the added impervious...
Yes, definitely.
Added signage and lighting.
Yes.
And if you trigger two, it triggers site plan review. Rather than do the 1,500 square foot of interior remodeling that really may not affect us...
Right.
But, but I will say this about that, though. So, so say you had an empty space where you just had three workers working all day.
Yeah.
And then you change it to something that could be like, that's only 1,500 square feet, and now it's a medical office. And, and the person wasn't planning on doing anything with the parking lot. You know what I mean? They were going to be like, I'm not talking about yours, I'm saying...
Arguably, they would be non-compliant with any ADA requirements then. If they're going to go to something that might have a 30-person occupancy during the course of a day from three workers, they'll need to put in handicap spaces.
Sure.
You know, they need to make those adjustments that would trigger...
Yep.
Some sort of an outside change.
Right.
At least one.
Yeah.
At least the parking.
Right. I think it's pretty rare.
So, okay, so, so then, say the building inspector picks up on that and says, for ADA, you have to put more parking spaces in. And the guy says, okay. And he puts in a bunch of parking spaces, and he says, is this okay, dude? And he says, oh, yeah, that looks good to me. So now, somebody sells the property, it comes back to us, say with a site plan review because they want to do something else. Say it finally gets back to us for site plan review, because it's been changed so many times that, you know, you know what I'm saying? And then when it comes back to us, we say, wait, how, how did this happen?
Because there's no plans to keep track of those changes?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios that could happen.
Or, or say you get some chucklehead out there that's making his parking lot bigger, and he doesn't realize that his septic system is underneath the parking lot, and he destroys that.
Seen that.
What?
I've seen that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that going on. Plenty of it on purpose.
So, um, you know, until, what is it, November is when I'm done here?
Do you still have that email?
Until I'm done here...
It was like, Nate, you had the tenant space, 1,500, that wording.
Until I'm done here, I'm going to give what I think.
Yeah. I'm not saying you shouldn't.
November, you guys can do whatever you want, but as far as I'm concerned, no. I think it's happened before, and we haven't had a site plan review because it's been overlooked. Whether it was Jim Merritt, whether it was, um, um, what's it, the guy from Bridgewater that was that building inspector for a while?
Ira Brady.
Ira Brady, yeah, Bob Ira Brady. You know, I mean, we've gone through a lot of building inspectors, and some of them, you know, whatever. I think Jim would have sent him to the planning board right away, because he was, he used to be the chairman of the planning board.
Well, I think Pete's point was very, you know, that extra layer is an interesting value. You know, that's exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, but there's, there are times, like Mark said, that this isn't unnecessary. Just like a simple change of lighting, exterior lighting, probably not necessary.
Well, that doesn't qualify because it's not the 1,500 square feet, right?
Well...
But that's the whole point, is we could change, that's why they kicked the section of the bylaw to us. We can eliminate 1,500 square feet and say, a tenant space outfit triggers site plan review when...
One of these three things?
Any one of the other.
Additional lighting, additional signage, um, an additional 2,000 square feet of impervious is covered.
Or change in use.
So you're adding pavement or addition. You're just saying impervious covers a building or parking. Walkways, everything.
If you add or change of use, that's guaranteed.
So if two of those things gets triggered, then it triggers site plan review.
Well, no, it wouldn't be in his case, because he was using that space, and he's just reconfiguring it to office. It was office before, it's office now.
Yeah, but he's going to be leasing, he's going to be subletting.
It doesn't matter.
But when he does it now, let's see. This, this looks like a pretty good presentation.
It is.
To us, right now.
You know, we're merely just using it as a...
But if we actually read, if we actually read what the presentation should have been, let's see, we have location of structure within 200 feet of property lines, existing places, we want to know who owns next door and stuff like that. Drainage system. Where do the utilities come from? It's a lot. There's a lot of work in this, in a site plan, what's supposed to be in a site plan review. Some of them, we used to get, like that guy, the guy that did the building that's on your side of the street, over, over, that was a really, really complete site plan review that they set up for. So one of the marijuana...
The Tricombe one? The old 3C Imports building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what a set of drawings it was. And then across the street, bare bones, almost nothing. You, you can hardly understand where north is. But, so there's, there's a whole range of...
So, right, so basically, what, if they don't change their site at all, they don't change their lighting at all, if they go in there with their, their marijuana facility, other than the fact that we have site plan review requirements for marijuana facilities, right? They'd just be able to do whatever they want to do, and just as long as it gets by the building inspector, he's fine. There's no second layer. I don't agree. I think change of use...
The change, the change of use would make, would make you do this.
Yeah.
And, and I guess you would just, if I was the applicant, I would just come in here and say, jeez, I didn't change the drainage at all.
Right.
Why can't I just not show that on the drawing?
Right.
And I bet you we'd go along with it.
Like, Mark doesn't have any drainage in his, right? Catch basins or...
There are.
There are. On your property?
Yeah.
Okay. But that...
I probably could dredge up my original site plan.
Yeah.
And nothing's changed.
I don't know if we could, though. Because all our plans are, you know, are probably gone.
No. That's from 2003.
We still have some of them.
Some, really?
Yeah, we just don't know where they are.
Right.
I know what room they're in.
So, did we just kill two birds with one stone? I mean...
Well, we really didn't change that bylaw if we're going to, so it works for marijuana use because we have that.
Right. It's guaranteed.
So when you say change of use, by definition, it doesn't change use if it's an insurance company to a lawyer's office?
Right.
By use. When I say use, that's the zoning regulation, use by right.
Retail to retail would be pretty much...
Now, would you argue retail to office would be a change of use that we're going to look at?
Yeah, I would say so. The parking's completely different.
So I think change of use is...
I would say it's...
Because there's a big turnover in cars in retail, and there's no turnover in, in an office. Or less so.
I think there's a terminology that we want to use specific to the change that's maybe not use, but I know what you're saying.
It was change, this change of use, I think, is like critically important, but the, um, here it is. Okay, well, we don't have this item on our agenda list, so I'm going to make a motion that we move on to the next subject.
Oh, it is on our agenda list.
What, this one is?
That we're talking about?
Where?
Well, I am.
It says, discuss bylaw creation for design standards for business-owned new construction. Isn't that...
No, that's, that's the other one. If we were going to do an overlay district in the architectural standards.
Oh, that's true.
We had it on our agenda, and I just wanted to, yeah, and it didn't get put back on, but while I did this, I just wanted to talk about it.
Yeah.
Even if this is, again, sort of informal. I thought it was a good opportunity to say, this is a, a physical example.
Yeah.
Let's at least vet it a little bit.
I think it's, I think it's, it's something of like multiple meetings, it really is, because it's like, we don't want to, we don't want to change it and then have it come right back to bite us, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but 1,500 square feet is just not enough.
Okay, I mean, that's something...
You know, having only one to kick in site plan review. There should be other ways of kicking it in, like the folks are saying.
Yeah.
You know, like, like change of use.
Yeah. I just think there's a, there's a, there's a point where...
And it's, even, like, when we were at Nate's office today, it was like he was saying, he's, we're working on the residential site plan review, and it's triggered by disturbance of an acre. So it wants to stop him from saying, I cleared the trees a year ago and I threw grass down. Now I'm going to go for a permit, and I don't have to touch that. There's, there's always going to be somebody that's going to try and find a loophole and get around it.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think that we can, I mean, we can do our best to draft to stop that, but it's going to happen.
I think the acre is kind of high, to be honest with you. You can do a lot of damage to a small piece of property and come in under an acre of disturbance. It's hard, but it can be done.
Yeah, and what we had also talked about was like this over by us on School Street.
Right.
Those houses that dump water onto School.
Yes.
They're all Form A's. We don't get to review them, but if there was a mechanism, when you made curb cut, to say, if your water, driveway dumps stormwater, which I think that there was something in there that says...
We used to do curb cuts.
Yeah.
They still do if they get noticed, I think.
I think the Selectmen's Office does curb cuts.
No, we don't do curb cuts.
They got moved out in the morning, yeah.
But we used to.
Yeah.
We used to.
But I'm just saying, curb cuts could be another way. Because I don't want to do site plan for every house.
No.
It's not our job. But if there's a way to stop the water from running down the street...
Yeah.
And you could say, using School Street as an example, there's a stone wall that's right on the edge of the road. And if you said to the developer, upward of that, at every driveway, put a trench drain or a culvert going under it. So you contain the water on the driveway behind the wall and run it downhill instead of right out. There's four outlets now that water and silt runs right down the street, and the town workers are there. And again, this is something all of us deal with, and none of us can do anything about.
And plenty of stuff like that. This is a public road.
Actually, actually, there is something that you can't do anything about as well. Because when we approve a subdivision like down on your road, we told them that they had to provide areas for the water to get off the road and go into the property. That was one of the criteria of them getting their lots.
Yeah.
And they decided that that wasn't a good idea.
It filled it in.
Yep. So the origin, you know, I mean...[1748.73]
Well, if you, I mean, again, a trench drain is kind of commercial across a driveway, but
Right.
if it's only the driveway water, not the sheet flow off the lawn that comes down behind the stone wall and cuts out also.
Right.
And you can mitigate that with a pipe, a 12-inch pipe under a driveway, that's reasonable.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's, and it's not something that they would necessarily bury.
This is driveways and in a lot of cases, most of their roof. Because a lot of people are bringing their gutters and dumping them onto their driveways, you're getting the whole shooting match. Not everybody, but you're getting at least half their roof onto the driveway and then it's on, the entire thing on their street.
But those lots down in his neighborhood were Form A, so we couldn't make them put drainage in, it wasn't a town road, so we couldn't make them put drainage in.
Same thing on School Street, they're Form A.
Right.
But I'm just saying, so with, with what we're talking about, changing the bylaw
I did six dry walls.
for the tenant space, we also can change the bylaw for the water runoff of a driveway to make it be not, there, there's a term that Nate used for what, it's like if you put your sump pump out, it runs down the driveway in the street or into a storm drain, that's a violation and they could stop that. But if it's just rainwater sheet flow that clearly spills out your driveway, you get the little silt spill every day.
Right.
There's nothing we can do about that. There's nothing in the bylaw, but if we could change something, we may have control over that without having to say disturb 30,000, 40,000 square feet. You're only going to get the new ones coming in, you're never going to fix any of the old stuff.
Right.
And I'm going to throw out here, this is a great example of how we could use a town planner when getting this stuff coming in, because some of this, some of this stuff, like, I'm a volunteer and I, you know, I, I know, I know enough to be dangerous, but I don't know everything and I certainly don't know a lot about drainage. But those are the types of things, the next volunteers that come in here, then what if they don't have the experience, you know what I mean? So it would be nice to have that professional resource to, to say, hey, look, we, we know these are going to be problems. You know what I mean?
Yeah. But you still need a mechanism for them to be able to legally review it and comment and, and put teeth in it. You can't just have them sitting over the...
But the bylaw review piece, there's to do, what, what I think they're talking about is just business or industrial, right? It's not any residential. That's what we, that's what we were given.
We, we just changed the residential.
Site plan review
Yes.
that we were given last week was to discuss...
Right. Oh, so you have it right there.
Yeah. And, you know...
Yeah, we have to expand the 1,500 to a longer list of...
The law still has it.
Triggers.
Yeah.
Longer list.
There should be some, some other things, so maybe we can get it on the agenda for the next meeting and we can write down our thoughts on what we think.
Yeah, that, what you have there, that's the one we're talking about.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
To say, get two or three triggers to say...
It could be this, this, or this.
Lighting, signage.
Yeah.
Added impervious outside the four walls, so to speak, and we need a number on the added impervious to say, what's, if it doesn't hit the 50% density bonus, technically it doesn't go to us unless we have a change in impervious.
Well, if it, if it hits any, if it hits a 50%, that, that should be a trigger.
It is, that is.
That should be a trigger.
That is, but again...
It's not a trigger right now.
You're right, I'm agreeing. But I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I have substantial added, if you want something like that to come to us and it was a change in use.
It was a change in use?
No, I'm just saying, if it was a change in use, added parking, lighting, all that. Maybe that's what you put in there.
That's a good start, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great start.
You just named four that should go on the list.
And you need so many of those things to tri, to trigger.
Yep.
But I think...
And, and that's one, let's see, now, this is in the zoning bylaw, so it's got to, has to go to town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and all the hearings and stuff.
But I think... You know, like you said, Zink, original site plan review, I've spent upwards of 15 grand on paper to come in to do that presentation, to get a site plan drawn, to get all the engineering done, to go through all the boards, it's an expensive process. And to say, somebody with an existing building, like I say, I could come back with those plans, I know I have them in a file cabinet, I just forgot to get my old site plan. I could do that, but I just wouldn't want somebody to also have to spend 15 grand for 2,000 square feet added parking to say locate, you know, having a guy out there with a stick for four hours and going back to the engineer's office. I, you know, I think...
Well, then again, you look at...
It depends on the level of, I think...
You look at the people that came in from, from the old Thompson Box, whatever they call that place, and he had the wrong plan. Because there's been so many plans for that, that property.
Yeah, that, that's a whole bad example, because there's stuff in four things in a junk box.
Yeah, but still, they came back with the wrong plan. You know? And the wrong plan that didn't have all the information on it. And that's what we want to try to avoid. Because them going into the building department with the wrong plan and saying, this is what I want to do, and he's looking at the plan saying, oh, this is an old plan from, from before, you know? Okay, rubber stamp, done, see ya, you know? And didn't pick up on stuff, you know what I mean?
What about reducing the site, the lot coverage to 25% or 30% or whatever number we pick? So that it's, it's, it's a little bit narrower? So you don't have to have site plan review if you're not, like, there will be certain people that that wouldn't affect because they're not going to have that coverage.
Reducing the lot coverage on the bylaw?
Yeah.
The impervious coverage.
The impervious coverage.
That triggers site plan review.
Exactly, so that that way you'd, you kind of make it a little, the, the box a little smaller. And change of use, I think. And you said a couple of other things, was signage?
It would be, it would be a big political, it would be a big political fight. The, the great thing about reducing the, reducing the coverage, the great thing about that is that you could give them added bonuses to get the coverage back to where it was in the 50% by, and, and now you can get some of your cute things that you want, you know, of making them look.
I think that's what your point though is, because we're probably going to have a lot of smaller lot, like this, it's already got a building, but the, the Train Depot, that's only a one acre lot, acre and a half lot.
Across from the liquor store?
Yeah. And it, there's another piece over there with a house on it for sale now, and it's not a big lot. I'm just saying, you may get a commercial building to go up there that would easily exceed the 50% or be close to. But to, to lower the density bonus trigger to 25%, even if you just had, there's still two density bonuses.
Available to you.
To get you up to 70%,
Right.
but the first one's triggers at 25. And then at 50, you get up to 70.
Yeah.
And you use that first bonus to, to institute some of your contractual requests.
Yeah.
And, and you could separate up maybe parking.
25 is pretty low, though.
Because they would weigh differently.
Well, I think so. Like, I get really concerned when you say $15,000, like, you can't inhibit business from, business needs to move and, and, and part of that is having to get to building on cost.
But, you know, that's, that's, that's new building out of the gate. You're going to spend that kind of money.
Yeah.
But I just, I don't want to impede for, for me to go backwards if I had to go get, because the engineer that did that, I think they retired, so I got to go to somebody else now and...
Have it redrawn and...
Yeah, and I could spend easily upwards of $5,000 just...
Was that for that building?
No, the, the latest one was.
Okay, yeah.
The Kenneth Welch building. So, you know, I just, I'm just saying that as a devil's advocate to say, to be fair to the applicant. We do want to review stuff, but I also don't want them to, you know, have to show every sprinkler head in the lawn, so to speak, you know?
Well, it, well, to...
If things exist, if, we're looking at existing conditions and they're not changing things, you know, for example... My limit of work is basically here for my parking area.
Right.
Do I really need to show that catch basin, that catch basin?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to disagree with that, though, but here's the problem.
And...
Down the road, we keep going, sorry.
You're, you're right, because down the road, that's the plan that we're going to have on file and you're missing that catch basin and that catch basin.
It should be, it should be...
True, it does replace the other one, you know what I mean?
It should be, it should be, from the last one, it's adapted, from the last one, it's adapted, from the last...
You're going to pull out the old plan? When you get rid of the 2003 plan?
Not in this case, but I, I could see the, I could see in other cases, not, not in this one, but...
If I was filing, if I was responsible for filing, I would have them to get, I would have them to get...
It would capture it all?
What's that?
And then that would be the one unfilled.
If I was responsible for filing the drawings, I, I would keep that, that would be the last one.
I wouldn't eliminate them.
Right. What's that?
I wouldn't eliminate.
No, you never, they never, no.
Yeah, so you still have the old plan on file from the original work.
And roll this right on top?
Yeah, roll right on top of it, is right.
And you're not trying to make it the new plan of record, it's just an update to some parking changes.
Well, just, let's throw this out there, just for stirring it up. I wouldn't want to say on TV that we're saying that we don't get downstairs to see our plans very often and we don't have the ability to check. Because we work full-time and Kathy's working three jobs. Right? So we don't get a chance to see those plans all the time. So we don't want somebody coming in here and showing a half of a plan and leaving stuff out. Because that is going to be the only plan we have when we start thinking back about it.
In 20 years, in 20 years, right.
You know what I'm saying? Because we don't go downstairs to look at the other plans to match them up with your plan. Because we're not that...
But I would be the dummy that put the light pole in my septic system. If I did that, it's my problem.
It's, 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 it's your problem now, but it, but if you, when you sell the property and 20 years go by and it's down the road and now somebody else is coming back. I'm thinking when I was, when I used to buy commercial property and you're, you know, you have an anticipation, I'm going to do this with the building, I'm going to do this with the building and I buy it with the plan of doing that, and then I come to find out, oh, I can't because this is here and that's here, but it wasn't on the plans that I initially got. We, it wasn't until we got the architect involved and they went and looked everything up and they came back and, I don't know, I guess I'm going off on a tangent. But I do see, I, there is value in having it placed on top of the last one, placed on top of the last one, so it's consistent.
With the new parking lot, Mark, you're at, you'll be at 38%? Is that, is that right? Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was before or after.
And the only reason why you would even file that at the Registry of Deeds to, to put a, a record of that at the Registry of Deeds is if you were taking a lien out or a loan out.
Right.
Because you wouldn't file this plan
Right.
at the Registry of Deeds. Because you already have the property, unless you add some more land to it or subtract some land from it. That, you'd need a site plan review. And it would have to be signed. But there's, there's going to be no rec, once you, once they bring in the, let's say, the, the half-baked plan.
Yeah.
Right? That's what we have on record. That's the latest recall that we have, oh, I know where that plan is, pull it out, there it is, see?
But it should be with the other one.
Do all of our plans go into file?
They buy address?
The, they all have in the last 10 years or so.
That's the operative term, right? Land use is long-term business.
Do you file them, Kathy?
I can't tell you what...
The plans? I have a small, little cabinet that I use, yeah.
No, no, we, those are, those are someplace else.
Who files our plans?
The old ones? They're in the storage, I think in the library.
Well, the ones that we get, like, this one, when we sign it and we send the copy to the black hole of Lakeville, where does it go?
I mean, right now, I have, like I said, I have a small area that, since I've been working for the board, where I have those plans.
And we're the ones that, what's your name before you?
Like I said, before that.
All of downstairs at the old coffee shop, you know the coffee shop?
The old library.
Where the, where Lorraine used to...
The Book Cafe?
Yeah.
They're down there?
Down, the whole downstairs is full of them. And half of them are, are stuff that came from the building department and they're done by lot blocking and number.
Yeah.
And the other half of them are planning board stuff and they're done by address. By, by mailing address.
Those plans should be...
And they're all the way back to 1920 or 1930 or whenever they started keeping them. And, but, but it, it's, it's hard.
Hard to find.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's risky.
I, I told you what room they're in, that's...
A business wouldn't do that, it's crazy.
Because that's still owned by the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and the person, the person that files them, what's...
Lola.
Lola. You remember Lola?
Yep.
Yep. And, and she, she, she absolutely files everything.
Yeah.
The, the only, and, and nothing, sometimes there's two. There's two places where they're filed, but it's never that it's not filed.
Yeah, she's, she was saying, she was having, she wanted to do it her, her way.
Yeah.
Now I'm going to say something politically charged. Here's a great idea, let's build a new fire department and use that resource to have some decent storage at our town offices. Sorry, just had to throw it out there, I mean, this is, I, that...
Well, that's way above my pay grade.
Yeah, well, I just...
Yeah, I can't.
All right, moving on.
I can't say anything.
All right.
So did you want that on the agenda?
I mean, there's filing and that is...
We have to.
I think we have, what do we have to?
We have to go back to this one, which is on our agenda from last week, the bylaw review and...
But the tenant space?
Mark's point is, you know, we're going to come up with...
For the three or four?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to keep it rolling, but at certain point, we're going to come up with a change and then that change is going to sit for three, four, five months and then we can put it on October's agenda, possibly.
For the, yeah, for, for fall town meeting.
That's my only point, is that like, we'll do all this work right now and then it'll sort of go stagnant.
We shouldn't stop, though, and then not complete it.
Yeah.
No, not, not, not complete it, just, we, we, I, I think it's better if it's more linear and we, we do it, like, and we figure out what we're going to do and it may take four weeks or four meetings and then we schedule a couple of hearings and, and then we get ready for, for the fall.
So let's keep it on the agenda until it's resolved, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, do I need to make a motion to do that?
So like half a dozen triggers for...
I think you just did, and I'll second it.
For site plan review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Pauline's path, are we going to put a date for that? Were they going to ask us for a particular date or were they going to just take what we give them?
I don't know, I was a little confused with this because it's, I thought that I scheduled the public hearing and then they come in, but then Zink said that the board schedules the public hearing. So I had a date with Jamie, but then I couldn't make the, the legal ads, so...
We wouldn't make it in time, I mean?
No, not the date.
Oh, it's the next two weeks from now? Okay.
So without action, it's approved?
No, it's a subdivision.
No, it just depended on plan. We have to have a hearing.
45 days.
We have to have a hearing and then it, it goes up to the town clerk, if once you approve it, it goes up to the town clerk for 30 days, I think.
I'm not sure, this is my first one, but I know that it's like 100 and, it's like 140 days if there was no preliminary...
Yeah, if there was no preliminary plan.
Just, whatever's convenient, whatever's the next one for you is, is, I, I move we schedule a hearing for...
Are we doing the 26th of March?
Is that good?
26th of March is on that?
Our next one after the draw?
Yep.
She has to advertise twice.
Because we won't make the 12th?
Yeah, 3/26.
And that'll be at the police front, we're ready.
Yes.
So that's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. About approve the meeting minutes for November 14th?
Right, I read the meet minutes in my email and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I did as well.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So we've already discussed enough bylaws tonight? We're not going to go through the design standards or are we going to go through the design standards?
We had talked earlier and we were going to get the master plan to look at that to see if we could change our regulations to add architectural standards to our regulations rather than to write a bylaw based on what Serp had, had put in the new master plan. So, maybe we're gonna circulate that, so we'd like that on the next meeting as well.
Those are rules and regulations for subdivision control laws, is that what that's called?
What?
On our rules and regulations, the Lakeville Rules and Regulations for Subdivision Control.
Yeah.
The, not necessarily for, um, a bylaw for development. I think it has to be a bylaw. But, I might be crazy.
That's, we'd still like to read that.
Yeah.
Section or find that piece of the master plan so we can talk to it a little bit better.
Yep.
Once we read what they put in there.
I think our rules and regs are for, specifically for by, um, subdivisions.
I think that the three issues we've been talking about, the bylaw, the, the issue we talked about just a minute ago, bylaw change.
The tenant space one.
The tenant space one, um, the changes that we talked about there. And the, um, potential overlay district, which we sort of talked about, you know.
Marijuana.
No, for business, there's a zone to put architectural standards to that as one method. Or the regulations thing if possible, or just a flat-out bylaw.
I think they can work together, I think somehow we don't have to be, you know, we don't have to make it so strict, but we can make them so we have some stronger controls. Those are all three things on our list, right? The old business that we can need to keep rolling forward.
Yes, and I think that's something that.
But, but, I, I wanna chime in on, on Brian's side. That the, the, the rules governing the subdivision of land pretty much are for subdivision of land, it's pretty hard to sneak much else in there.
Yes.
Like a site plan review or anything like that, it just doesn't.
No.
The only great thing about it is, is that we, we can change these on our own just by telling people that we're voting on them.
Yeah.
But we can only change, but the reason we can do that is because it doesn't, it only affects what's within that subdivision.
Right.
And we have a special law that permits us to do that of, of changing things within a subdivision and not next to a subdivision or anything like that, but only within it and I, it's pretty hard.
But most, but I think all of the, at least in my mind, this discussion is entirely about commercial properties. It's not about residential at all.
Right.
Because we're not gonna get into design standards for someone's home, that's someone's home.
No, no, we're not talking about. We're saying you can't put it in your rules and regulations.
See, we don't happen to have.
It has to be a bylaw.
We haven't been doing any commercial subdivisions, but we can.
Yeah.
I guess we did a few years back, right?
We can, you know, that, that, that's part of our purview, it's just that people don't, they don't build that way, they take the whole lot and they use the whole lot.
We may see some of that on the hospital property though.
Yeah, we, yeah, we may. That, that's, that's exactly right.
Okay, that's.
But as far as that, it does have to be a bylaw review.
Was that a motion?
A motion to keep those three items on the next agenda, yes please?
Yes.
And I would say until we get them done.
And a second, I, I seconded Barbara's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, I'd like to let this gentleman, you've come to see us.
I wasn't sure if you guys were doing anything with the, the meeting this week. Uh, there's something on the topic, like.
We didn't have anything on the agenda this week.
He's, he continued until the Hickory Lane?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
He's still making drawings.
Or continue till the 12th?
Yeah.
March 12th?
And I'm planning on making a little stink with him when he comes in because you know.
Cause?
Good reasons.
Careful, cameras on.
Do you know what's going on with the two houses at the end of the road that he was on his foot?
That's what he's drawing.
Oh, is that, that's, is that Hickory Lane?
What?
That's Hickory Lane.
That C2 work? Well, it's on the same drawing.
Okay.
It, it's on the same drawing, the Hickory Lane is, is on that, is on the picture that shows that one.
Yeah.
The, the one that was still on Hickory Lane, all they were doing with that lot is they were taking the backland off and attaching the backland to a, I believe to a different lot way up the street or something like that. But there wasn't any building planned there or anything like that, but they were just taking, that was just a separation of backland. Nothing was happening up front. Except that house, which turned out that we had released seven years ago.
And the two parcels you're talking about are the ones that are over the wetlands, they're on the backside.
Over on the right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That you actually get to by going all the way down to the water.
That's gonna be tough.
Travel down and come back up.
That, that part, those two pieces, if you look down and you walk down below going towards a beach, that whole beach area is, for years has been nothing but small land. So, to put, once again, you're gonna be putting more water down that, it's gonna come right down the road.
As I recollect, you were going to, um, was it Don, Bob?
Bob.
Bob. Have you, have you spoken with him?
No, I haven't had a chance.
Okay.
I was gonna do him a couple of weeks before I.
I wouldn't wait, cause we're gonna be see, having that hearing on, the guy's coming back on March 12th. He was gonna ask.
Oh, we don't.
Well, it was just that that way he's, no, but he said he was, he's looking for some resolution, we can't, you know.
Well, it's, it's not that, even building the rest of the road he has to build isn't that easy to figure out. It's all, it's mighty wet wheeling there.
Yeah.
You know, back in the day, we used to get the whole board together and do a, a site walk on Saturday. That might be a, a good call for that.
Okay.
Hey, Saturday afternoon, you guys wanna do it Saturday?
I do not.
Does that?
I could go later.
Maybe, maybe the following Saturday.
I would love to go when it's wet, honestly.
It's.
Sorry.
When I said, when I said wet, it's wet.
Yeah, it's, it, it is, it's.
Yeah, but what he's described is, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to.
A lawn mobile sink, put it that way.
What?
A lawn mobile sink, they have a hard time petting a lawn over there. It's so wet. That's your round. I wish somebody years ago had the care that, you know, we do now, cause we see what's happening and we're careful.
And I, and they're gonna say it again in 20 years and that's why we keep, gotta keep beating on the drum of, did you see the, uh, I put a thing up on Lakeville, Helping Lakeville about the flood zones? Everybody should be looking at that.
Speaking of that, there are two, there are two flood zone maps coming out that we're gonna have to deal with, have hearings for just the moment they come out because we're gonna try to get them on to the onto the spring town meeting. The reason for it is, not, not that there's anything controversial about them, but the controversial thing is if we don't accept them, if we don't do the paperwork and accept them, then people can't buy the insurance.
Right.
So, you have, it, it just, one of those things that we just have to do as a, it's one of those half desserts. And it's all, everything's written up already, just people are waiting just to hear the flood zone. The flood zone.
They getting that from, uh?
Is gonna be way down, uh, the changes are way down in, uh, bigger, you know, greater Quiddicus. Uh, where the map changes, there's nothing. Uh, there aren't, I don't think there's even a house on it, but there's plenty of water on it. But they're down by the, uh, it's, it's all, the land's all owned by New Bedford Water. I think.
Which has to be protected, all that stuff.
Have we, we seen Twisted, uh, Twisted Growers in here yet?
Only a long time ago when they first, um.
You already have this safe, safe review, all done?
It was, uh, across, it's on Millennial Park, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, are we moving on to the next one? Cause I have a comment on marijuana, but I don't wanna take up too much time.
In new business?
It's a new, it'll be a new business, I'll bring it up.
Okay, new business? CPTC 2020 Conference Schedule, is that what you're talking?
Yes.
I'm so in.
The town will, um, town will pay for our attendance to this? I'm, I'm gonna try to go.
Okay. I'll, I'll drive, I can pick up.
I definitely wanna go too.
At, uh, at Town Hall.
You got it.
I've already there are.
You're gonna come in next week? Or two weeks, two weeks? Two weeks, 12.
12. March 12th.
I think that's what he's continued to.
And I'll, I'll call tomorrow.
Yeah. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, everybody's gonna go, does it, I, I can, I will make it.
I strongly recommend anything that Barbara St. Andre does.
Barbara St. Andrew?
Yeah, he's, this lady.
Okay.
They're, they're all lawyers, but, but some of them are. Uh, Bob Mitchell is a very good guy. Judy Barrett is a very good guy, is a very good person.
Okay.
So, I'm in.
So, do we need to individually do this and request the rate percent?
You have to tell them which ones, you have to tell them which ones you're gonna take.
Okay.
What do we need to know this by?
One moment.
I don't know.
Sorry, I'm having.
I don't even know how to use it.
March 16th.
Didn't even sound like you.
Yeah.
So.
You have plenty of time. There's plenty of time because the, uh, as long as they know how many of this, roughly.
So, next week.
The process of repurposing a shopping mall, Paulson-Cottis on there. How about that?
You're waiting for?
No, 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 no.
That's darn interesting.
He's a friend of mine from Bridgewater.
Okay.
Worked on his house.
You did?
The one down in, uh.
Oh, down, down Dallas?
I wanna go to all of them.
North Palms, there, yeah?
Yeah.
And you're gonna go to Red.
Then we're not driving together then. We go to the morning.
But am I gonna be afraid I'm gonna geek out or what?
Too much to do.
This is all day.
Ah, I see that.
You, you, you're out of there by 3:15.
You're leaving at 8:00, or leaving here at 6:30?
You have to leave pretty early, but, but you're out of there at 3:15 and it's only, you know, like 52, 53 minutes away.
Right.
On a Saturday, yeah.
Alright, well, it's better than a Wednesday.
Unless, unless it's snow.
Okay.
And then it's Worcester in the snow.
So, the other new business thing I wanted to bring up was the, um, we had the Serpette hearing last night. They're forming, they have formed a Rural Caucus Advisory Board, uh, or Rural Caucus, a committee of people to come together to advise this, at the state level. The state has a committee that's formed to take, start taking information, um, from rural communities. And we qualify, we are one of them, um, so I got myself onto that caucus because I'm a glutton for punishment. And, um, I just, you know, I'll, I'll circulate sort of what the, what it's about and what we're gonna be doing, but it's a great resource for us to start getting information up to the state level. Cause you know, they're coming down and wanna make all these housing changes and different things with us, it's gotta be a two-way dialogue, you know? Sometimes it feels like it's only coming one way. So, I will, I will share that with you guys. Um, the big thing I wanted to share from Serpette last night was the, we're getting, gonna be having an update next month from the Cannabis Commission, they're gonna be coming in to give a talk. Apparently, there's quite a few of these businesses, as I predicted, that are not going to be opening. The profit margins are changing and several of these very large companies have actually already decided to move out. So, other communities are saying, you better take a look at who you've signed contracts with, you may not be getting the tax revenue that you think you're gonna be getting. They may never open, which speaks to the need to have, you know, when we sign these community host agreements, to have a date on there, right?
Performance guarantees.
Performance guarantee, right. And a non, and it can't be transferable.
But we don't sign them.
We don't, but that's something that, you know, we're talking about.
But if they don't open, uh, how do you?
Collect the money?
You can't, you don't.
Yeah.
You don't get anything, so they eat the cost and we.
The, the key thing is, if there was somebody that was against it and they put in a fee for a non-performance agreement, then you wouldn't have anybody applying.
Well, I think it, this issue really speaks to the importance of not knocking down existing forest and land here to lay down more buildings for buildings that may never be used, that was the whole point that I was so aggravated about when we talked about a couple of other locations here in town, right? Use the industrial park, we have those buildings, when those buildings are up and running and they're full, then you can talk about, you know, a different location. So, the overlay district, I think is gonna be, is really, really important, we talked about that. Other Serpette stuff?
Um, and, and that will come under town meeting, but it'll, it'll come there, it'll go there just because probably Kathy or either Kathy or I will have done every letter of it and handed it every step of the way because they just they just don't wanna do things, you know? No, I, I mean, the, 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 the stuff that we, uh, that we're proposing, we have to, we have to do all the, we have to do all the paperwork.
We, um.
And it, it's quite a bit of it.
For the town meeting.
For town meeting, to get it checked properly and make sure that, you know, because you skip one comma and you gotta, it's a do-over.
So, they have these, um, these really cool cameras that they got, they, one of them is, uh, I don't know what you call it, but it gives you a, it, it's like, it, you can watch a video or watch a picture move back and forth. It's a virtual tour, but it's really good and it also lays down the buildings in different perspectives, we got a, we got a view of it yesterday. I think it's gonna be a really interesting resource for us and if anybody can think of a use for something like that, you know? First thing I thought of was we should be mapping out our schools, so it's part of our active shooter plan that our fire department has very clear pictures of exactly what it looks like to walk into that school. Do you know what I mean? So, that's, that's the kinda stuff that would be available, the other thing that's available is they have these drones, which for fairly low cost, you can use for different projects. Project that I thought of that we might think about is checking, taking a look at some of our culverts, we don't really have a good accounting of what's happening. You know, who's, we're driving by and you see that it's over there, but how do we know that it's draining properly, like the property we had over, remember Bob's? Remember Bob cleaned that out?
Yes.
Right, but that, that, if we have a major, major storm like we will be having, keeping those clean and maintained is gonna be critical and right now, we really don't know. Really don't know.
Who doesn't know?
I think as a community, we don't really know.
No, it's somebody's job, you know?
About?
It is?
About what drains? What drains are we talking about?
Superintendent of Streets.
Okay.
I, I assume.
You mean on the public roadways?
Well, I'll bring up the example of.
The ones we, we are responsible for.
Right, which is, there's a lot of them.
So, on public roadways, yeah.
And it's not being maintained. And they have sediment.
Town easements on people's property.
And we shouldn't, oh, this just kills me, right? The more responsible, got the liability. So, when Bob came along, remember when they put in the, the condos down there, there was that big piece of, there was that big culvert, it had to be cleaned out. The water wasn't moving properly, he voluntarily took care of that, you know, as part of working with us, but not everybody's gonna do that and we don't really have a handle on, you know, we can get money to, to deal with some of these things if we know what the problem is, but right now, I don't think we really know.
Well, I don't wanna get into a public discussion about the subdivision that's coming up tonight, but just saying something like that, that has a retention pond.
Yes.
I noticed that, it, it, I guess it depends on the lot lines. We, uh, we looked at one ledgeway off of Pierce Ave. Paul turned it, beautiful neighborhood.
Yeah.
But they create a separate lot that ends up being the town's problem. And when we look at a subdivision, can we say, no, we wanna see a lot line right in the middle of that, it on two pieces of property? And you create, uh, you know, an OEM for the neighborhood to handle that and it not be
Yes. Totally, yes.
Part of the town purview, it's just a, you know, a little private way that we may not adopt, or do we...
I totally, that's exactly what I think should happen. It kills me to drive by.
That's gonna be public, that's gonna be public street.
Yeah.
But the, but the town shouldn't have to take on the responsibility, it's the...
They don't.
They shouldn't.
But they have...
And they probably won't.
No.
We did, well, then what happened with the one over at...
We used to, we don't anymore.
Okay.
The selectmen refused, that's why they'll lay out the road, they don't, they don't accept the road as a town road, they'll lay, accept the layout of the road.
Okay, but what happened over here, I don't remember, when we did the one over on, you know where I'm gonna talk where the golf learning center used to be? You know where they built all the rental properties? Over on...
LeBaron.
Not LeBaron, if you're heading back.
Woodland Ridge.
Yeah, I think it is called Woodland Ridge.
That's not rentals?
They're, oh, most of them.
Those are golf learning centers?
It used to be a golf learning center, I must have the wrong development.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm talking about...
Shamrock.
Taking the road over to, like you're gonna go to Muckeys?
Yeah.
You can tell what I do on the right.
Shamrock, I mean.
Yeah.
I wonder if it closes Nooker's store.
So that, remember that, and that looks, right, and I think that's, is that ours, or is that theirs? I don't think there's an HOA that's paying to have that cleaned or maintained.
Yeah, and they won't.
See?
And what's wrong with that?
What's wrong with that?
Yeah.
It's, it's the developer's cost, if you, that property, why does that become a public expense?
It doesn't become a public expense.
But who's gonna maintain it?
They won't.
So as a suggestion...
They just let it sit there, and there's weeds in the bottom of this pit, this four feet deep, and it doesn't look bad to me at all.
It doesn't look bad, but what, is it able to perform its function by moving the water out?
Sure.
It is, okay, because it wasn't a few...
Some do get overgrown, and you don't want trees growing in them.
Right.
But...
And then you can't let it go for years, but you sure don't have to do much maintenance.
Do you remember the work that they had to do out at Jean Bartlett's, something up there?
They got eleven acres of those...
What?
Eleven acres there of...
Yeah, of drainage structure.
Just amazing.
What's...
Woodland Ridge.
Was it Woodland Ridge?
Yeah.
Woodland Ridge up on, again, this week?
Off of Pickens.
No, Pickens.
Yeah, off of Pickens.
Yeah.
Eleven acres?
Eleven acres of them, yeah.
Wow.
Because he's taken all of the water that's coming down from...
Up above.
The Heritage Hill Golf Course, comes across...
It's an elevated wetland.
To him.
Right.
In the woods, between the golf course and that neighborhood, because I remember on Conservation, we looked at somebody putting a pool, and the wetland was above it.
Yeah.
Wow.
And we're like, this is silly, you even put silt fence, were they worried about the water going into the pool?
Right.
But, all that water is all behind every one of those houses to come across.
Perched water table on top of glacial till.
Yeah.
But it's a pretty development.
Yeah, it is.
It's attractive.
But they had to increase the size of that drainage because of the water that was coming down Pickens as well, because they put that double catch basin in there, and that gets pumped, piped out back, because that guy next door used to put that electric pump on his driveway.
Yeah, and that's the other side of the hill from that guy, it's the same hill, same water.
Yeah, yeah.
As the guy that was here.
No, he's on the other side of Long Pond.
No, he's on this side.
It's on the other side of Highland.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, but it's the same Highland, that hill, that's the same, same water, just get us flowing down the other way.
That's right, he's on the side of Highland, right.
And I guess the last item from Serpid was the handout that Kathy included, this is renumbering the highways.
Oh, my God.
Okay, the exit numbers are gonna be changed, and it's gonna start soon.
Mileage progress.
Bad.
Yeah, actually, I mean, when they made the argument for it, it kinda does make sense, I don't like change myself.
You drive through Joy Jar anywhere, that's how it is.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah.
And then you can tell, did you like it, because you can tell how far away you are from your destination?
Once you understand that it's actually a mileage marker, not, how did I just go from exit one fifty-six to exit ninety-nine? What did I miss?
Right.
Well, you just traveled fifty miles, and it was two exits, and so, oh, it's by the mile.
Right.
So you get used to it pretty quick, but it's gonna be strange, because you'll have fractions when you go through, like Brockton or something.
Yeah, I don't use exit numbers.
Way upstate, they had, they've switched over to that in New York, but then you cross the line, and now you have...
Can I turn it back in?
The kilometers, and the kilometers are changing even quicker.
I'd like this too.
What did you say?
Well, they also use the same rule for kilometers, when you cross the line, you're turning into kilometers.
It's good to me.
Yeah.
Turning into kilometers.
That's one thing I wanted to ask.
That same numbering system, and everything, it just, and you're going from two hundred to three hundred and fifty, and, you know, in two miles, or it seems that way.
Are we giving this path ticket?
Kathy has something that she wants to say.
Yeah, just at the next meeting, it's the master plan presentation, and also Long Pond, so I don't know if you wanna make that meeting, if you can make it at seven, that might be better.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just to get a jump on it?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll get you all a copy of that at a time, I mean, electronic copy.
Seven o'clock, March twelfth, or the twenty-sixth?
Take your time, loading it, yep, it's like fifty-three...
Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
So it's literally doing a motion, but just announce.
You're sending it to us sooner, though, like...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just, I just...
Which that one's...
No, it just was tonight.
That's seven, now.
Just before this meeting, the master plan.
Catch it on that one.
So it's gonna be...
Yeah, I just wanted to look at that candidate, so we don't lose them, and have to get them ready.
We have one more meeting on it tomorrow.
I wrote my name on that one.
Okay.
Because I put notes on the back of it about that one.
We used to. Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Motion for adjournment.
I need it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.